This conference will now be recorded.
When we bought our property.
Yeah, I know. Well, we walked by it and because we usually go in there and get a big salad, but we, I can't even remember what we ate at. Per Friday night.
So you told me.
We tried to do.
How to do it?
On the other end.
Okay, good. He said, I'd like to put a whistle.
I don't even go over that side. Yeah.
Everybody's territorial.
Yeah, that's facts.
That's probably our new place.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Item number one on the agenda is consider approval of the consent agenda items.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I second that.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Item number two is requests or comments from the public. There being none, we'll move on to item number three, consider appointment of Daniel Parker as a permanent judge pro temp for the Edwardsville Municipal Court.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This item, we actually did this about one year ago exactly for the judge pro temp position. Just to recap the agenda memo, the judge pro temp serves in the, when the regularly appointed municipal court judge cannot make their court docket, which does not happen very often, but it does sometimes, per our ordinance, the appointment of the judge pro temp is done in the same manner as the appointment of the regular municipal court judge, which in this case is of the council approval. Who we've got tonight, who has been recommended for the position is Daniel Parker. Mr. Parker is a practicing attorney and a partner with Avogados Parker and Parker Firm and also currently serves as a municipal court judge for Lake Quavera. Mr. Parker has served in a number of capacities that are summarized in the agenda memo, and he's also served in the pro temp slot for our court as early, as recent as this year, we were just in a, didn't have our permanent pro temp established at that point, but needed somebody to fill in for Judge Duckers. Mr. Parker was available and I believe he served for, not the full day, but for part of the day. So he's familiar with our court system, I should say. Mr. Parker is here in case you've got any questions of him specifically. And if not, the staff recommendation is to move forward with Daniel Parker as a judge pro temp for a municipal court in the city of Edwardville.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion to approve the appointment of Daniel Parker as a permanent judge pro temp.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight, Judge.
I'm going to pull up something, a quick media change real quick on this next slide.
While Zach's doing that, we're on item number four. Item number four is consider special event permit application for the Cal River Regatta to take place at Edwardsville Riverfront Park on Saturday, May 14th.
No.
What's showing you, this is correct, this is not the Cal River, which is good because they've not been permitted for the use yet. But this is an example of a regatta activity before you as a special event permit application for May 14th to hold the Cal River Regatta over at Riverfront Park. So just to be clear, we're permitting the use of the park space in the parking lot, not the river. The applicant has been in communication with both the U.S. Coast Guard and the state of Kansas about the use of the river. Everything's above board in that respect. We don't require any additional certification or licenses of that effect. The state says it's okay. The Coast Guard said it's okay. So the last piece of this is to get access to the river, the Riverfront Park via the boat ramp included. And once we get done with this video, I can pull it up for the presentation, but it is in the packet. Is the layout, the proposed layout of Riverfront Park that shows the parking stations, the location for the emergency response presence that will be there, as well as just generally what the route of the race is on, along the river. I noted in the agenda memo, which went out Thursday, that staff recommends approval of the permit contingent on a couple of items. Those items seem to have been satisfied from speaking with the applicant who is here tonight. Tom Kimes is here representing the applicants. Their goal, and I think they're kind of shopping around for a permanent space for this activity. And so this, you know, would be a nice use of the river, especially as we start to explore different ways we can activate the river. The conditions that we noted in the permit were securing a parking agreement with Standard Motors. They have done that and they're going to be providing that documentation to staff by the end of the week, as well as figuring out what the appropriate presence would be for PMS and emergency response, which also from speaking with Deputy Chief Morrow seems to have been figured out. So from a staff perspective, we are comfortable with recommending approval of this special event permit. And Mr. Kimes is here. If you have specific questions about the event or regattas or what have you, or the Kansas City Rowing Club.
How many teams do you expect?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tom Kimes. I am the organizer and I have a couple of people on my organizing committee. We are doing this invitational. This is the first time we rode on this venue, so we wanted to make sure it was effective. We did not open this up to general clubs. So we invited four clubs within the state of Kansas, including Kansas City Boat Club, which rose on the Kansas River near the Kemble Arena. Kansas City Rowing Club, which the video you saw is Wyandotte County Lake, not too far from here, which is the home of the Kansas City Rowing Club. We've also invited the juniors from Man, City of Manhattan, and we've invited Wichita. We have also invited Des Moines and Whitfield Academy, which has a rowing club. It's a middle school, high school. And Whitfield Academy is a private Christian school in Kansas City, Missouri. So close proximity to all of this. So we invited six clubs. Five of them have said that they will definitely be there, provided everything is approved. We anticipate that each team will have between 10 and 20, so about an average of 15 growers. The ages of the growers, this is primarily a juniors event. So in our sport, juniors means 12-year-old to 18-year-old. So these are teens. This is both boys and girls.
Looks like a good use of our space that we have there. And I mean, I see you've got restroom facilities and the only thing I'm not seeing is trash. You know, with the food truck and with that many people here for that length of time, you know, is the, is the trash being taken care of by the, by the event itself and not our staff?
We do have the dumpster setup over at the park as well that could, I assume, handle the capacity there. I don't have too many concerns.
I mean, will there be volunteers though to kind of help with that pickup afterwards and?
Yes, it's, it's our tradition. We like clean spaces to row, so it's our tradition after the event. We will actually do a litter cleanup in the park.
Okay, any permanent or not permanent, but larger tent spans other than a pop-up tent?
No. On the diagram, you can see those small white squares. Each of those is a tent. Each team provides its own tent.
Okay. Thank you.
Zach, with this, with this going on here, will this help us? We can use this as leverage for getting funding for what we want to do around the.
The more, the more and varied uses that we can have for the Riverfront Park is definitely going to add to the value of potential sponsorship opportunities for private entities when we move forward with different pieces of development at Riverfront Park. I would agree with that.
I spoke with Sand Tech this week about that, let them know they weren't aware of it when I talked with them and they were really excited. They thought it would help greatly with the grant writing.
We have been approached a couple of times over, say over the years, in my time here, about similar use, rowing, et cetera. And there's been general support and just, I don't know that there was somebody that was ready to take it on per se. We've spoken to, I don't remember all the rowing clubs, but the one at Wyandotte County Lake, because they had, they were relocating some years back. We even had discussions about this as a location. So the, you know, the use of this with this purpose has been brought up, not necessarily in a formal capacity. So there seems to be interest in this area of the Riverport, similar to this type of event. It'd be a good, might be a good test.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the special event application for Mr. Kimes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Will we be notifying the sand company? Because sometimes they have barge out in that area.
We've copied them on email so that they're aware of the event. I've not had specific contact with them, but we will reach out to them to make sure we're not interfering with their operation.
Or they're interfering with you. Thank you.
Well, the business comes first.
I think most of their operations occur somewhat the opposite direction.
East of that. We've also put them in contact. There's another individual who's got a fishing permit with the state to remove some agent carp out of the river. We've given them their contact information, so they should be able to meet, shouldn't be too hard to coordinate, you know, they're not bumping into each other this far out.
Very good. Moving on to item number five, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Supreme Green Land Works LLC for the citywide mowing contract.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is, we brought this, we touched on this earlier when we approved the cemetery mowing contract with White Lawn and Landscape. This is the second piece to that application. Our recommendation is to move forward with Supreme Green for the citywide mowing contract. To recap our process, we issued an RFP throughout late February and March. The cemetery portion of that was reviewed by the CPPS Board in late March, which is when we moved forward with the White Lawn and Landscape Group for the Cemetery Mowing. Supreme Green was the low bidder for the, for the combined both of the areas. Technically speaking, Top Care was the low bid for the right-of-way areas by a little less than $2,000. That said, from a staff perspective, we'd like to keep this under one contract, and we've worked with Supreme Green before and have been satisfied with what they've done specifically to the city hall complex. So this would move forward with mowing of certain public spaces, those being the city hall area, Riverfront Park and the community center, and then certain sections of right-of-way that right now city crews are handling. Supreme Green would essentially assume those roles for those items that we noted in the RFP. There were a couple of areas that we ended up pulling out that staff is going to continue to do along Wood End Road, maintenance around the entrance signs, things like that. But by and large, the recommendation is to move forward with, with Supreme Green for these standard, more routine mowings. Public Works Director Dusty Zinger was able to provide a breakdown of the hours that staff dedicated to mowing, just mowing last year. Came to about 444 hours. So broken down into days, that's 55 and a half days, so almost three months worth of, of staff time that can now be dedicated towards other activities now that if this were to move forward, the routine mowing pieces wouldn't be eating up a lot of that time because it takes a lot of time to mobilize that equipment, get it out there, a lot of edging and weed eating, depending on where you're at. So this would free up that around 444 staff hours for items like road maintenance and other things like that. Free up for special projects in the cemetery or inside the parks. So from a staffing perspective, I think the more that we can, this is the direction that we received from council during the budget process last year, the more we can look towards these contracted solutions rather than additional staff. It kind of frees up our folks to do some of the more nitty-gritty nuanced work that isn't as time-consuming as, like I say, getting all the mowing equipment out and mobilizing it. The cost for this is kind of broken up in a couple of different areas. In the Parks Department, City Hall Department, Public Works and Community Center, between contracted services, building and grounds, maintenance, service contracts. So we've got four different kind of sub-budgets within the general fund that we feel this, we can support at the price point noted. If there's any other questions, I would entertain those now.
I had a question. I believe we hired a position for the public spaces area to, to do maintenance and things like that. Will that person be used in other places now?
So we didn't hire anybody. So what we did was essentially transition a public works maintenance person to dedicate it in parks. So he, he remains dedicated in the city park and in the city cemetery and along the trail in Wood End. So that's kind of where their purview is going to be. We also have them doing special projects like the renovations over at the community center. Certain things that we have them do for the tree lighting ceremony. Say again? Yeah, court setup and take-down, special events. For example, he was over here most of the day getting, clearing out some carpet and moving some space around. So as we're moving staff around with the addition of our part-time person. So he's, he's got plenty to say grace over with the activity, just on public grounds, being defined as the city hall. I mean, kind of general city hall maintenance, city park and the cemetery.
So we didn't add any, I thought we added a position for the budget.
We, we essentially, we, what we did was add, transitioned that person over and then added a position over at, that position was added to the Parks Department. The staff member was transitioned over, so it was a new addition to the Parks Department budget from a staff perspective. On the public works side of things, that, that staffing has remained stable. So they've got the same staffing they always had. We added that person over in the park side of things.
So it was Public Works that's been mowing these areas now, not?
The right-of-way areas, right. That position was always couched as being taken, taken care of the city park and the cemetery, which is still their primary focus. But the right-of-way areas was always being handled by Public Works.
How does a right-of-way get assigned on the new desert?
Well, if it's an area next to a vacant lot, for instance, we had pulled out some of those in the RFP that we ended up pulling out as far as our calculation goes, then the property owner is responsible for mowing of that area. But if you're talking about, you know, areas where there's a sidewalk or a trail, typically the city will, will handle those right-of-ways. Green spaces, you come on and off certain ramps in the city.
So typically those areas where we've done right-of-way improvements and there's not typically development or homes. So 110th Street, you know, down along Edwardsville Drive, because the houses face in, the road was improved, the sidewalks. I mean, that was kind of some direction, some things we did, some direction came from the council as a whole. So just some of those areas, there is no property, I mean, there's always a property owner, but they, you know, they may not be local. They, you know, it may be raw land and we certainly want to make sure we keep those areas, especially along our sidewalks and trails. But who decides who mows that? Who says Supreme does it or our city does it?
We, we say that. They've got a schedule of that.
We have specific areas that's all assigned.
Yeah.
When you said right-of-way, that's a lot. They don't do all, and Public Works will still do some of the rough right-of-way. Mainly it's the manicured, what I'd call the manicured type of areas that we're talking about. That's what I wanted to hear. But they're assigned in the numbers, and I know, so how many mows they do. So, so all of this is based on some assumptions of how many typical mows there are a year. But if for some reason we have to mow it more often because it's really wet and it grows fast, or the number, it slows down because it's hot, dry and there's no rain, we can adjust what that number is. There's no minimum or maximum to their mows. It's directed by the city. Typically, it's, it's a once-a-week mow, but again, if conditions change, then the city always serves the right to say, we're not going to mow those areas this week because it hasn't grown and we don't need mowers out there just to mow. Not unlike you would probably do in your own homes, right? If it's a hot, dry summer and you've decided not to water your grass and you may be able to get by with 10 days between mows instead of five or seven days.
And that's essentially what we encounter in the cemetery too, is we just budget on if they were to mow every single week from now until the end of October. So we don't anticipate that they will do that. They don't typically reach that. When it's raining a lot and it does grow, it's too rainy to, to mow until it gets dried up. So that's how we calculated the estimated cost for the contract.
I was kind of hoping to see with the added, I mean, the cost of the mowing, and I know it'll help Public Works get some things done, but as far as our landscaping and our, our trails and paths, I don't even think the park's been mowed yet by the walking trails. When will, like, at what point will we see more?
So you're talking about at the, at the city park? So that's going to be probably, and our, the staff member who you referenced earlier has actually been out most of last week, but mowing is going to be starting here probably this week. That's, and that's where his focus will be on the trail at the park and along the section of Wood End as far as, you know, that, those areas are concerned, that, and then maintenance and, and projects over at the cemetery. So that's where he's going to be, and he's going to have more time to do it because he won't be mowing the big vacant lot over at Riverfront Park or up and down 9th Street, or over, or doing weed eating, weed eating and edging along the stones over at the, the community center and things like that.
So this will alleviate some time for him.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay, and focused then on the parks.
So basically, if you think inside, if you take city park and you think about the whole park as, as a whole, whether it's the field, the open space, the graves, everything inside when you come in the drive, that will stay under parks and recreation and under our staff. They'll also include the trail basically down to Wood End, consider all that kind of one area. And it had some uniqueness with the bridge and, and we have the disc golf courses and some of those things that need extra, maybe extra fair, extra maintenance. We're leaving our right-of-way signs there to be able to kind of upgrade some landscaping around those, which probably be by a third party, but just, you know, just like everybody else, right? You got to pull the weeds, you got to keep them up, you got to mow them. They, they just take time in helping to use our staff doing those types of things. Then sitting on a mower for eight hours a day is mowing open grass.
Right, that's kind of what I was hoping.
Yes, that's exactly, right.
Very good.
Madam Mayor, I authorize or approve the authorization city manager to enter into a contract with Supreme Green for citywide mowing services at the submitted unit pricing.
Motion in second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Should be all you hear from me this evening.
All right, item number six, consider authorizing the acquisition of New World's mobile computer-aided dispatch software and associated licensing as an extension of the existing CAD licensing agreement with the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, the council, you have the background information at your disposal there to review. And in a sense, we're, staff is asking that we be authorized by the council to procure that, the licensing and software for the CAD mobile system, which is a New World Tyler Technology product. And so you may have some confusion about, well, what's Kansas City, Kansas have to do with this? But so historically, the Kansas City, Kansas, the city of, the police department, the fire department specifically, are the authorized managers of the countywide communication center. Specifically on the police side, it's the police department, and that is under the purview of the chief of police. And as it's engineered or designed to function, we have to be an extension of that licensing and software agreement that Kansas City, Kansas, the authority over the communication center has. And it's the only way it can work that we would get the data that we need and it would talk to each other and that sort of thing. It's a very common somewhat engineering tale about how it works, okay, without going way deep in the woods. But in a sense, historically, you haven't heard me up here presenting this particular product, and it's been, they approached us some time ago. It's been a number of years. And the reason that is, you'll see the price tag here that I've offered you is the $26,690 is what I'm asking you to authorize. I haven't been before you because that price tag was $400,000 and we had other priorities. And we also have our own records management system, and that means something. We got that at a very great value and it's been useful for 15 years now. Essentially, it was a package deal. This product is designed in modules. So you have a CAD, computer-aided dispatch module, and you have a records management that holds all the data about people and the events people are related to, right? So this was a package deal that they said we had to have, and that's key. The philosophy when this was originally put out there and, and they implemented and went with this particular product was that this was going to be a one-stop shop, if you will, and they adopted that philosophy until last year. That's how long it's been in place, it's been a number of years. And essentially, that's your cost driver. We don't need the records management piece of that because it really is an extension of the Kansas City, Kansas records management system. We would no longer have our own. The, that, that was adopted originally by Bonner Springs, the city of, they paid the money. And they found out that it was just so hard for them to use and to get things as an individual customer, they were not. They were a customer, KCK is the customer. And so that's where they found their obstacles in their, in their usage. So they did as we are now, is we, we use a separate records management system. And you can have the standalone CAD system. So for the first time in our history, the biggest obstacle there was really a downtown philosophy that you had to have the, all of the product, all it or nothing. And that has changed and it's really opened the door for us. And that's why you've not heard me talk about it here before, because it was $400,000 and that was not a value add. But what we have here today is an easy yes, in my opinion. This value add with money we already have, which will not impact the budget. So in a sense, from day one, we will be able to answer calls for service in a more timely, in a more timely manner. We will have information at our fingertips. We'll be able to message car-to-car. We'll have all of these things that will be integrated that we don't have today, even though we have an expansive technology in our mobile data terminals. This is the one piece we don't have. And I think I've used the analogy before, it's like the woodworker not having a chisel. It doesn't make sense in a modern law enforcement, you know, agency in, in these times. So in a sense, the money that we're asking for to procure this with is a part of the CARES Act funding. And one of the categories we, we were reimbursed for was public safety, either equipment expenditures during COVID, such as salary and that sort of thing. So that money was then secured. We were, we acquired the money and then it was put into this grants fund where it's been in reserve, waiting for that kind of a, a check mark of this is approved, approved use in line with the, the thinking of the CARES Act. And in addition, it's not going to be a burden on the taxpayers, the police department budget or the general fund. So it just really makes sense that this is kind of all aligned timing-wise, in the sense that we have a philosophy downtown that says we can piecemeal this. And as your technology coordinator for the city, I said that 10 years ago. But there was, there was this obstacle that we had to remove and we've done that, which is good. It was an open door. One of the first meetings I had with the chief of Kansas City, Kansas was about the CAD system, and that's something we talked about. So I was happy to see that. We've been, we've been working with New World. This is somewhat of an easy setup for them. They've done it 100 times and they've done it here in the county, so they know what to do. We work with their IT people at the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department, with our fiber project and with other projects that we're involved in, and they've been involved in this setup. So it's, I think it's really going to be seamless. It's going to be value-add at day one. We're going to have access, access to information we've never had before. And really what that means is, and not to belabor the point, but manual dispatching, and that's what we have when we have people, okay? It's not the automated piece. So the manual piece is we answer a phone, the automated piece, but somebody has to answer it on and then take down that data and then pass that data along. And what happens is the CAD system is the automation. It's instant data. It's being put in there as people are speaking and then it's transferred to a person. Well, some of that is slow. Then it finally gets in the queue and, and okay, you're the next one up. And then it's radio dispatch, voice, the manual piece of it again, right? And so what we're seeing is that data is coming in four, five, six, 10 minutes earlier to the officer. And they can know things about the calls for service that they don't know today, such as, oh, by the way, they, they reported the man's wearing a blue shirt and has left and is walking down the street. You wouldn't know that maybe until you turn in front of that house in the current way that we're doing. It's just not as efficient, effective. It's not a value add. And as soon as we implement this, again, it will be, it will be that value add. So we don't have a budget impact. We have the money. It's as most affordable it's ever been, and we're, we'd be excited for you to say yes. So I'll stand for any questions if you have.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the acquisition of New World Computer-Aided Dispatch Software from Tyler Technologies for 20. computer-aided dispatch software from Tyler Technologies for $26,690 to be paid from the 450 grants fund.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Moaw?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Stites?
All right, item number seven, the city manager report, Mike, do you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, just, uh, I don't know, good. Just a couple of things, you, you have the administrative report, I would just add to it that we also have hired our part-time court person, I don't know if we had that at the last meeting. He started, I believe, this past week, and so he's going to be an asset. He also brings to us some technology background. He has a pretty extensive knowledge, not that he will be our, our IT person, but it's nice to have somebody else around that understands IT. And most of his experience has been around courts and law enforcement, so it may be another asset to the chief to be able to use. As you know, in, in the report, they've, our office administrative position is fulfilled starting this next week, and we're actively in pursuing the administrative specialist for development services, that's how we title it, which is the person in the back, which handles everything from business license, building permits, to kind of helping with the whole training and development process, so it's the training secretary. So we hope to be able to get that person hired fairly quickly as well. And then the last thing, which isn't really good news, but on the base grant that you know we applied for, which was in the area of the Wood End, Tiff District, so base was, I, some, about stabilizing the economy. It was a hundred million dollars that the state set aside for economic development. Well, they got 440 applications for $1.8 billion. They had a hundred million dollars in available funds, and unfortunately, our application did not get funded. But again, we know the answer, we don't submit them, and that answer is always no, so I think it's always worth, you know, throwing your name in the hat, and quite honestly, they may come up with another round, and we'll be prepared in the system. So those are the only things I have to add.
Zach, did you have anything to add?
I was just trying to pull the details up, but in, while, while the city manager mentioned grant, the Wyandotte County Transportation Grant was approved. So that involves, largely, it's a grant meant to, to improve transportation access to, to jobs, to connect people to jobs. So it does have an impact in the industrial park here in Edwardville, and also what we discussed on the front end was setting up kind of a permanent loop for folks to get from Edwardville to the bus stop in the Walmart area of the Legends. So as that kind of gets firmed up, we're hoping to be able to offer that as a, as a, kind of a permanent loop in that transportation system. So we're excited that that was able to.
It's called a micro transit grant, and so it is a fixed route. I, I believe it served both the Legends and, I'm not sure what the, what the proper name of it is, but the old, as everybody always calls it, the old Indian Springs Mall Transportation Site. I know it has a better name than that now.
A hub.
Yeah.
It's a hub.
So, and it will have several stops basically in Edwardville, and predominantly to help workforce development that's out there. Several of our local companies committed funds to be a part of that, as well as the city. I was going to say, I think it was $10,000, $5,000 or $10,000. It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't as, I, I, relative to the total, it was a fairly negligible amount. It is a pilot program, but they hope to use these funds to demonstrate that it's valuable, especially to the business community, that they can get their employees to and from their other places and get them here to work. So it's excellent, it's an excellent opportunity. Some have been in, well, honestly, been in the works for, you know, many years to try to get it to this.
And when you say multiple locations, are you talking about maybe outside of the businesses, mostly in the industrial park?
So, for example, we've talked about having one stop maybe roughly here, you know, this area, near the nursing, the, the three nursing homes, and then multiple stops in, in the business park, so we can kind of focus on the largest portion of our population, probably not, you know, just randomly along, but kind of our, some of our core areas. I think some of those are still getting, kind of to be determined, but the funding gives them the ability to acquire the equipment. And it's running through the Wyandotte County Transportation System, which is then tied to the broader KC ATA system, as the overall meaning. So Johnson County and us, and Kansas City, et cetera. So it, it funds those, those facilities, the equipment, the people, et cetera. And then really what we said to those companies, so those companies said, we, this is really important to us. And they said, we're willing to put up money, and basically they put up money, that kind of guaranteed them a stop, so to speak. I mean, within reason, we're not going to stop at every door, but if there are two businesses across the street from each other, it may stop, you know, in the parking lot of one, so everybody can congregate in one place, depending on who has the space.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Dionne, did you have anything for us? Chief Mathies?
I have one more thing to add. Captain Shore forced me into a tough decision. He resurrected our quarterly employee recognition program, a little hiatus, and have a recognition program for our employees on a fairly regular basis, but it's been on a little hiatus, and he made it tough for me because I wanted to vote for everybody because I think they're all doing such a great job. Narrowed down to three people, and Tom Haas, he's our code enforcement officer, our community service officer, was the employee of the quarter for this year, this quarter. Just done an outstanding, outstanding job of just handling, uh, that guy would pick up the trash, he would, he would scrape gum off the, off the stairs or something, and he would just do it, he really loves his job. He's just really doing a great job, so we're proud of him. Christine Redwin, one of our detectives, did a terrific job, very complex, very tearjerker cases, those kinds of things. And one of our officer, Robinson, who works right now is on the third overnight shift, does some terrific police work out there, and recognized those other two as well, that Tom Haas are, were, were a great job.
Very good.
I, I, I've just added, you know, and, and Tom really works across there, right? I mean, he works with us, so we're, you know, I mean, we have kind of, so, I mean, whether it's, somebody needs, we need a stop work order around, you know, a building project or business licenses that aren't out there, you know, the junk vehicles and stuff. So housed out of the police department, but really does work kind of across the spectrum, handles animals. So, so he really, he, he's really kind of the, the, the multipurpose player on, on the team. So he has input from a lot of places.
Chief, did we do anything special for him? Oh, we gave him a gift card and a, a little, something to hang in his office, or tell him how great he is. And we gave the other two, just because it was so hard, it truly was very hard. I had to make a check on, okay, which one, you know, because all are, and it's hard to say, well, you're just out. He's done some special things in that office that haven't been done before, to include reaching across easily, talking to people, getting things done, because you have to have a certain personality a little bit for some of that. He intimidated very quickly, and he's done, he has a great demeanor, good dad, DS later, but tough enough when he needs to be, we've seen all that part of him. Again, he was told to pick up nail department, he goes, you know, it was all the way along. But yeah, gave a little gift card and a little, a little chief certificate.
Awesome, thank you, thanks for bringing that to us. Chief Widdow?
Yes, I want to let Chief Moore talk about the grant. He has all the information on it, he wrote it, it's a call.
Craft? Craft.
Good evening, what, what does it stand for, chief, sorry? Okay. It's funded with penalties and court costs from various legal cases throughout the state. We applied for a $5,500 grant for a $7,000 powered lifting chair that takes people in and out of their houses, does all of the lifting for us, we just have to hold it steady. It's a large improvement over the equipment we have now. Should save us personnel injuries, should save us from dropping a patient, which we haven't done. But this will help us prevent that in the future as well. And we found out Friday that we got awarded $5,500 for a $6,900 piece of equipment. That's it.
That's awesome, thank you so much for that, and for continuing to apply for grants and save our taxpayers money and, and keep our people safer. And hopefully our, our staff safe as well.
That's the plan.
A win-win.
That's how we word it, keep our people safe.
I told Deputy Chief Moore, I said, in my limited time of doing this stuff, we just had to grab a chair out of the kitchen and sell them in the chair, and then two guys carry them out. So whatever that thing is, it's got to be an improvement, I know that much. I'm sure Mr. Rivers has never had to do that, so.
The board and the radio, brother.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you. Dusty, did you have anything for us?
Yeah, I wanted to mention the sidewalk up 110th Street. Is aware that there was some erosion issues that happened there after that one big rain a few weeks ago. So currently, I guess, we're cleaning it up, we're going to go ahead and get it cleaned up. Kind of wait for it to dry out a little bit, get it back up to the local level. And then we're working kind of with KDOT to see if there's any help that they would lend. It was kind of a mixed-up thing that happened up there. KDOT told our inspectors to take down the erosion control items, which I have never heard of doing until you have grass remoting 70%. There was kind of some miscommunication in that, I didn't know that that had happened, that KDOT had said that. I probably should have asked more questions on that front, but either way, they got removed. I was under the understanding that we just need to do a little bit more inspection there, but since KDOT removed the devices, we didn't have an inspection on that. Anyway, we have an erosion problem right now, we're trying to remedy that. I was wondering if we could draft a letter, and if you guys would be interested in signing a letter for us to represent the city and say to KDOT, you know, the, I think the biggest goal of this, maybe even more so than getting anything out of them right now, is that this doesn't happen again on beauty projects. Whoever made that decision maybe is a little more accountable next time, because I do think it was a big fall drop on KDOT's part. And the 98th Street project will have some areas that are simple, so it's something that's really threatening, I think, if it's not addressed. So I think Michael and I will work together to draft something about what you're testing.
Yeah, hey, draft something with the mayor's signature, and we can copy the council. I mean, I don't know that we'll get, so to speak, you know, a KDOT to per se fund, would have been funded under the project funds, potentially that's still available, we just don't know. Normally, if they go project, they want real funds. But I mean, we know we need to fix it, number one, it's going to get fixed, right? And, and I know I've heard, you know, you know, it's not caused by Scannell, it's not caused by third parties. It was related to our project. KDOT, those are KDOT-managing projects, and I would agree with Dusty that they, you know, removing the erosion control until we had the appropriate ground cover was not the right decision. But it's kind of a decision that wasn't in our hands. The long and short of it, I think we just need to, I think we, we can have a little more power, so to speak, if we have that from the mayor and the council, if you all, if there are any concurrence, we've drafted, you know, to say, basically, you know, you know, we think this was inappropriate, it shouldn't have been removed. You know, certainly this should happen in the future, and we would request them, you know, opening those funds if they haven't closed. Because, and this was an 80/20 project, and there was, there was actually funds left under that, in the, in the sense of the total amount of grant funds. We didn't use the full 80% of them on that project, it just came in way under budget. And so that's what we would like to, to do if the council's in concurrence.
It is definitely unfortunate because the east side has the erosion control still in place today.
Right.
And there's nothing on the west side, like you said, because it's bad enough now, I mean, it's, it's not just, it's going to have to bring in new topsoil and re-drug and then re-seed it, and, and the whole deal, just start all over again. I mean, it's, there's, there's 10, 10 inches of, you know, rust through there. Yeah, I know that's the Bonner Springs side, but are, are we going to have to maintain that grass?
That's our right-of-way.
Okay, so.
We own that right-of-way, so, like on Riverview, for example, I don't know where, where these lines were drawn, but like if you go west on 100, on Riverview, up from 110th, Bonner Springs maintains to the north edge of the road, and Edwardville maintains the rest of the right-of-way. Somehow we own that portion of right-of-way in these agreements that are written, I guess, on some of those. But on this section, be purchased that right-of-way during this project, we need to install a project proportionally, so.
I would.
Yeah, but I was just going to say, but, but our right-of-way ends roughly where the telephone pole. So everything behind that is probably, roughly behind the, so the telephone poles, in that area, the telephone poles are, as most of the time, telephone poles are generally set to the outside of the right-of-way. There is a 10-foot utility easement behind that, where the gas company maintains, I think, their gas line. But so the slope, everything on that slope technically will be the property owner's responsibility to maintain long-term. You know, relative to this piece, to getting it properly established, right? When, when we go out and we obtain a temporary construction easement from somebody, we effectively say we're going to leave it in a, you know, a proper condition, right? And I wouldn't consider having deep ruts in it, it's, it's proper condition. Now, for some reason, they go out there, they being that landowner, start to disturb, change, or modify it, well then it, then, yeah, it's clearly their responsibility.
It's definitely, you can definitely see that it was a neglect on whoever's fault, but I, I'm all in favor of a letter being written and sent to, you know, whomever, to whom it's concerned, and then sign off on it. But I think they should be responsible for a repair of that, because it's, it's, it didn't work.
And it's not really, so to speak, it, it's not the, I mean, the contractor's been released from the project. KDOT said to them, you performed, you did everything we asked you to do. So it, it's not a situation where we can call the contractor and say, come back and do this, and you do it at your expense because you failed to perform. I mean, they performed as directed.
The decision was made to pull the erosion control, and it was on one side of the road, which was not, it's not as steep as the, as the west side, that, that's the challenge, right, that's the problem.
And so was it KDOT, us, or BHC that released the contractor and said, we're done? KDOT, so I would request that if we're sending this letter, to not just say, please don't do this in the future, but we are just beginning spring. Let's, let's request that they remedy this for now, and not do it in the future.
But, I mean, I'm hoping that maybe this letter will get us something out of that. I'm saying, don't bank on it, because KDOT is KDOT, and they're going to do what they want to do sometimes. But, I mean, we're going to work on that. It's interesting that you say that, because our inspector, BHC was our representative, that was our inspector, Alan was out there taking care of it. Did a really nice job, and he bought, he took stuff on Riverview and on the east side, but I think that KDOT really pointed out those, one of those, there were some waddles along there, some side walk specifically, wanted those removed. And the reasoning I heard was because KDOT has had to go back after the project, so once the project's closed, all those devices belong to the city after that. Well, supposedly, KDOT's had problems in the past where, then the city called and said, well, these devices are no longer needed, KDOT needs to come back to pair them out, so that's what they were trying to prevent. I 100% disagree with the, the thought that you would leave that stuff exposed, especially when they were designed to be placed. But yeah, the last.
We'll, we'll draft, yeah, no, we're not suggesting that, that we just say, thank you. I mean, I think exactly what you're saying, we'll, we'll draft the appropriate letter. Again, I mean, they released the project and had it removed, so it's, there was actually, contractors on these projects have an erosion slip, inspector, up the inspector, which was another party, they did everything they were supposed to do through the whole thing, but they're basically tied to the general contractor. So when KDOT said. So when KDOT said, contractor, you're done, the contractor said, well, then, you know, we're not gonna continue to pay this third party under our contract. And and that's kind of where it dropped off. So BHC was, BHC was our construction inspector and with them. And they are now, if I understand it correctly, for those erosion control devices that are still in place, I believe they're still doing erosion control inspection on those devices. But it's not them to, it's not them to say, go put a device in. It's doing, you know, the device is there. If, say, the silt fence washes over, in their report, they say this, this is washed over. And they notify us now, say, that's washed over, it needs to be reset and we have to, you know, get those things done. So it's not as if they just walked away, but there was nothing for them to inspect because it all been.
Actually, KDOT released the slip. I can't believe that that would ever happen. Like if I wanted KDOT to release the slip, they would not release the slip. So I mean, I don't know. It's just a weird situation. I can't believe that that would happen. Yeah.
Real aggressive and moving forward.
And so if we're running council signatures on that, when should we expect to have the letter?
I I think I would, I would recommend personally that we do it under the mayor's signature. We will make sure that, you know, that the council is noted on there, that the letter will be addressed, you know, on behalf of the city council. Basically, the mayor is is drafting this, stating these things, and we'll copy the appropriate parties as, you know, as an executive copy on the letter. I think that makes it simpler to have the signature of the mayor on behalf of the council, is what I would recommend.
Are you guys comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
All right. Councilman Adams, do you have anything for us tonight?
I recently had an experience with with Officer Tom Haas. He came, we had a dog at the house, a stray dog, and and he managed the situation very, very well, very quickly. And he gets along well with him. Does a really nice job. It's nice to hear that we're making progress on the bus service. I, gosh, I don't know if it was ten, twelve years ago when we first met with him. And and talking about the need for a bus service down through there. So I'm glad you stuck with it and kept pushing on and that that it looks like maybe something actually happens.
And I I would have to give definitely credit to wine dot E D C. It was a topic at every one of their annual roundtables. They kept coming up and they did survey, they did a lot of research to help support that. So, you know, that's part of what they do on our on our behalf. So Greg Kendall and his team really helped drive this as well.
Great. The carp, are they gonna come more than once? Because they were here like three weeks ago, two weeks ago on a Sunday? Were they have multiple visits?
They will have multiple visits and we've been in communication with them. They're supposed to let us know about it because technically speaking, your semis aren't allowed in the riverfront park. So they're supposed to give us, I think, the the visit you're talking about kind of predated the communication that we had with them. But moving forward, they should be letting us know when they're gonna be on site. So PD knows the activity going on there and doesn't ticket a permanent activity on the river. But yeah, they'll they'll be here through, I wanna say August. I mean, just making, it's kind of, I'm not exactly sure what their schedule is and it sounds pretty freewheeling from talking with the contractor, but they'll be here for the ones.
They're they're hired kind of on a per day basis and then on not to exceed for the season. So, so, yeah, so they're they're paid and and they're working at other rivers, other places, the particular individual. So who does this? I didn't really realize there was a business on on catching Asian carp and and et cetera, but apparently there is.
It's kind of humorous because their semi, their flatbed semi truck had freezer, freezers on it and all kinds of carrying containers to put fish in, I guess.
I I believe there is a market for those Asian carp as well, so they catch them. And then they also get the benefit of reselling them. I I think most fishermen and boaters are happy that they're just out of the water.
God bless America. Lastly is, wanted to really give a shout out to the CPPS board and to StanTech for the award that StanTech won from, I can't remember the organization, but it's a big deal. It's a really, I didn't realize how big a deal it was. And there's the affiliated group from from Minneapolis is the one that judged the entries. And they said normally they'll have three or four winners, but because Minneapolis has a reputation for being very difficult, is the the one winner, which was StanTech's Park, Riverfront Park proposal. It was very, it was very impressive that they won that. And I also wanted to give Zach a big shout out on that because Zach has worked very diligently with StanTech, facilitating those meetings, keeping things moving forward. And and Zach, thank you for for being the catalyst and keeping the ball rolling and and in the future as well. But did want to give you a a big shout out because I know you're a very integral part of that success with that as well. That's all I have.
Okay.
Councilman Bishop?
Mike, they're called fish sticks. Yeah. Hey, on this, on the Parks and Rec part about the one-time historical subcommittee, you should get ahold of Heinz. Remember, he did our hundred year, our centennial.
Right, yeah.
He's, well, I mean, after his rec, I'm not sure, but I mean, he's really knowledgeable about the history of everything.
He's got a lot of information.
I've been kind of in contact with Mr. Rogers. He's he's volunteered to participate in that.
Yeah. All right, awesome.
Councilman Malat?
All I was just gonna mention, I'm pretty thrilled with seeing what's going on on Fourth Street down there.
I thought you weren't gonna mention.
No, I'm happy as heck to see what's going on. Seems like they're doing a pretty good job too quick. I hope I hope I'm not. Well, it's only one way now, so earlier they could go around. Anyway, I'm just really happy to see that progressing.
Originally, the plan, they had the plan in there. They were just gonna mill that other side. And we really, you know, because again, all the roadwork is is our project under the county, right? And they originally had kind of designed it thinking they would just mill that off to re-slope it. Based on the condition and other things, we just felt there wasn't really good reason to to leave that there. It made more sense to take it completely out. So a little bit of the the plans got modified as far as traffic control because.
And that's okay. I think we can deal with that.
It's a better project.
People are, I think people are getting a little bit more accustomed to how they navigate that now. But anyway, I'm really happy to see that going on.
Councilman Trevor?
I guess I have a couple of things that saw it after the fact, the Cal River regatta. I don't know how that's gonna be promoted, advertised, whatever. But Councilmember Scott told me that, reminded me, the big races that weekend too. So I don't know if it could be shared, you know, careful of the traffic when coming, you know, something. If you don't know, you you find out too late. I mean.
We'll communicate that to the applicants about.
It'd just be nice to, people know that since they're gonna be coming from.
We'll give them kind of a, because also what'll be going on that day is a citywide cleanup. So, or no, excuse me, no, that's the week after. So they should be fine. Okay, yeah. Well, we'll let her know about the race.
But just knowing that, you know, if people don't know, they, like I said, you get, you don't have, right, you don't have a, you have to wait. So congratulations to the police officers too. That's something that's, I like that. I I like that program or how you did that. And Zach maybe can put that in the hot shot. That'd be, you know, recognition. People like that too. And and people need to know that too. So and I like that. Your interaction with them with the dog too. I I haven't had an encounter with him, so. Absolutely. And Zach, thank you too for all your work on the parks. That's with everything else you do, with everything else you do when you're down an employer too. Everything you do. No, thank you so much because the Riverfront Park project has been a lot of work in the making and not only just showing up to the meetings on Wednesday nights, everything else you do, organizing the group coming here. So thank you for all that extra.
No, of course, I appreciate it. While we're on that topic, so surveying is going on over there right now. We're finalizing the contract materials with StanTech on the design portion of it. Probably some point in early May, we're gonna do an invite to the folks in the Riverfall subdivision just to let them know here before they get to, StanTech gets turned loose on some of the design stuff. I mean, all this stuff's been shared publicly. We've not been shy about what's going on over there. But just so we get a little bit more of that localized input as far as here's what's going on and here's kind of what it looks like. What are your concerns? What are your thoughts? So we can get that hashed out too, so.
And that's all I have. Councilman Scott?
On the bus transportation that's coming into Edwardsville and will they be keeping track of passengers at any point to? I guess my point is, or my concern is, is if if our citizens don't use it enough, could that go away? And then and then if the answer is yes.
I think that's the short answer.
Okay, then that's what I was afraid of. So I think for us, it's it's a, it's nice having that here. It's really good to have that extra transportation here. So I think we need to do everything we can to make sure we advertise it, communicate it. You know, if there's a bus stop, you know, centrally located like you're talking about, if there's a schedule that could be put on that just for the, you know, any new new people that are wanting to participate. But maybe that's included in the hot shot as well and any other means that we can get that out there. Unfortunately, we still have people that, you know, don't have the smartphones or computers or have that technology. So whatever's the best way to reach those folks. Maybe it's a flyer in, you know, the nursing home and the other high rise and just whatever we have to do to get that out there. Especially if it's, you know, dependent on how many riders per day, per week, whatever.
And again, it's it's primary focus, not so, it is around workforce, about workforce support, right? But why people need to come here to work, people might need to go from here to work.
That's right.
It's not one way. I mean, we we think about our employers, what is, you know, what was your needs? And they talked about transportation, but we also have people, and we know in this community, right? Very few people stay here to live and work, right? We we have a lot of influx come into our to our workforce and we have a lot of our workforce go out. It's just, it's just how our community is. And so you're absolutely right that that it has that benefit both ways. And then can potentially help others who are trying to just get general transportation to to wherever. You know, we we do get the benefit to a point of tidlow transit, but it's, you know, it's fairly, I mean, it's limited. And I think it's one day a week and it's predominantly geared towards shopping and medical. Right, that's that's a primary thing. And of course, it's, you know, mostly funded through federal and and the city of Bonner Springs. So they they have higher service level in Bonner Springs, as we expected. But we have a couple of opportunities and the better we can.
Yeah.
Use those. So we will, we'll certainly be working with them. If it, we're actually having a meeting coming up fairly soon now that the grant's been awarded to start getting into more of the details. And again, working with the local business community as well. So I, I mean, I think some of them have just been, as Mr. Adams said, yeah, we've been hearing about this for six years, eight years, ten years. We'll get on board when we see something, right? And and it took somebody taking the lead. And again, I would have to say that the wine dot county transportation program, and they're really the ones that kept sticking to this thing, getting it out, doing all the applications, doing all the work. And wine dot E D C really driving that workforce development. You know, business park needs, saying, we keep hearing this, we have surveyed data to support this. You know, how do we get this from, yes, we want it? You know, there wasn't really a funding mechanism. This grant came along. Looking forward to trying to help get that off the grid.
And just one last thing then on the erosion issue there on the road and on the sidewalk. I definitely appreciate you and your guys, you know, cleaning that up for us and getting that looking good again. But I, if there's any way you can get an estimate of how much time you're gonna have, you know, just on the cleanup? And then maybe that's something that we can include in that letter. Uh, because I'm sure that they haven't been here to see what happened, you know, on their decision to pull that, that that silt rope, the erosion mat or the erosion rope. That may, that may help or or keep track of your time if nothing else. And I don't know if there's a way to get reimbursed out of that fund you was talking about. I mean, I know that's wishful thinking, but it's unfortunate because it was looking really nice, you know? That's all I got.
And I would just add to that, keeping in mind, this is one time. So if we get another torrential rain mid-April, then this hours again, so whatever, tomorrow. So I just communicating that and what do we need to do so it doesn't happen over and over? Because you guys have plenty to do besides that. Actually, when Councilman Trevor brought up the NASCAR race, I thought it would be a great opportunity to communicate with Highway Patrol and see if we can limit the hours that we shut down one hundred and ten street. It makes absolutely no sense to have it shut down in the middle of the race when there's no traffic going that way. And I know we have very limited authority there, but it would be a good time to reach out now since that's coming up and.
And I think that they have been better in the last few races of, they close it, you know, incoming and and have it open. Because I've been up there in the last couple of years. I mean, it used to be they wanted us and, you know, they wanted us to close at River View, close our roads and use our people. And then they did it at the bridge and and many, many, many years ago, effectively, we said, well, if you're not, I mean, two things, if you're not gonna compensate us for our time, why are we there? And number two, you know, we saw certain criminal activity occurring because we're tied up watching barricades instead of doing what they needed to be doing from a, from other type of police activity.
Well, they kind of get used to it because other police departments in the area volunteer their officers to stand by the street for hours at a time. We don't have that manpower. So anyway, I would just communicate upfront. I know it's been better, but just keeping that open for our people as long as possible is great.
The operations guy.
You should expect it closed and then they're supposed to, that's their point, they're supposed to stop it, to open it and then re-close. That's supposed to be now.
It's how it's been working.
Okay. I mean, we communicated this for a number of years now, but is there anything new? There's nothing new other than they were, I mean, then, when the guys stand on the bridge, I don't know what was happening. But they had it closed the whole time. That's been a few years ago. But I understand based on our concerns that we expressed in the past, that if you have them there, why don't you at certain points remove the barricades and direct traffic?
Right.
Just let it flow as is.
Absolutely, they're there.
And so they should have people on there, on the bridge, doing that particular thing, whether they're doing it that way or not, or changing it.
So we just did talk about our traffic meeting with Kansas Highway Patrol and others and the and the Unified Government. And KHP, they're having staffing issues just like everybody else. And it kind of went back to around the COVID times, you know, they they kind of saw this lean team, if you will, out there during our races. And it had a lot to do with attendance being low and they just didn't see that traffic. So the current plan right now is there's a coning pattern that's gonna go out for the load in. And then then everything's open and then post-event, the Unified Government will take over a lot of that coning pattern across the bridge. And I don't think we'll have to close any of the ramps or anything at this time. And I don't think the Kansas Highway Patrol is gonna have a huge presence like they have in the past. I think we're getting one officer just in case. But I'll I'll be able to tell you more once we have our meeting here in a couple of weeks.
Cool, very good. Thank you.
We can, you know, one of the things that we haven't had, but you know, as as we understand what the traffic pattern is gonna be and, you know, times, but we can try to also publicize that more for our people. Say, the race is at from noon to three or whatever the times are. So with inbound traffic, you know, from ten to noon, you know, likely it's gonna be closed. And from three to five, it's like, whatever those are, we can work with Mr. Scott or others to kind of help get the word out. I mean, when those things.
And then on the the bus stops that are coming in, I think if it's it's really focused in on that workforce development, that's fantastic. If you spend any time at other public transportation areas and bus stops, you will see litter all over the place and they're pretty nasty areas. And so I would really encourage as that planning goes forward to work with our police department and making sure that our lighting is where it needs to be. If there's trash, who's picking it up, who's cleaning out? Who's cleaning out? Is there a trash can? Who's taking care of that? If it's, if it's any sort of like a bus stop and not from a workplace doorstep. And so, just kind of keeping that in mind so we're preventative and, and moving forward with, um, instead of having to figure something out after the fact. And then the last thing I have is the median on, well, a couple of things on wooden. One is the median, we still have the cone there. Are we going to have some, either, we talked about removing the median since it keeps getting run over? Any progress on that or timeline?
Yes, it's on the, it is definitely on the repeat due list.
Okay, it's on the list. Okay, very good. And I have noticed some more people down there, um, that, uh, spring's here, fishing season started, and we've had some pedestrians because there's no parking, uh, right on the side of the road there. Is that ours or is that KCK over by Peterbilt? Both? Okay, is there, I, I feel like.
I can give you some history. We, we met with Wildlife Parks, KCK, the Highway Patrol. We had a group meeting, it's been.
Two years.
There was a bit, pretty big problem down, you know, number of painted things. That road has always been no parking.
That little section?
It's always been no parking. It's only in the last few years that we corrected those signs. Probably when we redid within the road, it was about that same time. And, uh, there was all kinds of problems, parking left the ride, we had people pulling out in front of people and things like that. But they had it on both sides. We as a group, even the Wildlife Parks, uh, said, well, environmental design, that's what we're talking about here, right? What, what's attracting the people to park it, whether it was no signs, it's wide, right? It's somewhat improved service. And they had put a chain up, but you know where that kind of walk-in access area right there is? Where they dumped the old boat, they, uh, so that, that was part of that kind of cleanup effort. There's practically no public access there in that area, crossing private property except for the KDOT right of way, which that gated area is. And then when you go into certain places on the river, you know, there's signs say, you take your canoe out in certain places. But on those wiers, that's trespassing, you're not allowed to be on it personally. So, less encouragement of that particular area for fisher persons, uh, that they, the group there, industrial group as well, wanted something done in that. So, what's happening is you've got the Mars property, people parking there, and they're parking over at the, uh, boat you can go on. On the go. I must be hungry for going to. But, uh, that's kind of the history of where that was, the signs were erected because of that. You cannot park on wooded road anywhere. And you can't park on 98th Street anywhere in the city. So, those things historically exist.
Okay, so that's private property. So, if people are fishing there, it's not like along the river where, where it's.
It's one of those things, it's how you get there is the problem. You know what I mean? You can't access the river, they, they have Wildlife Parks that wants you to access and have, uh, that piece of it. The problem is you got to go across somebody else's property, uh, Peterbilt, that was a problem going that little area, little slice of bay app, things like that. So, there's no real public access along that stretch. And so, that was number one. We had three people frowned in there, uh, like within weeks of each other. It was a, a problem with it, which is what really prompted citizen concern down there and the police concern and response. So, and I don't know, is that we, we've had some close calls, but it's been tapered back because the usage is a little tapered back as well. It's not easily accessible. Therefore, the environmental design work at both of them.
Okay, so that's why they're parking up the road.
There had been discussions, and part of that discussion is about that area where, where the boats, that's KDOT property. There was a, a discussion of even, because of the parking problem, is to have a, like a, a park and ride lot there, right? So, get the cars off the street, have a controlled access to the park and ride lot. And KDOT didn't really support it for my, I think more for dollars and cents. You know, we even talked about, hey, if you build a park and ride lot, you know, we'll, we'll figure out a way to, you know, pay for a porta potty and some trash thing. You know, we'll do things. Parks and Wildlife loved it because it, you know, it also gave them, because, you know, Parks and Wildlife, well, he has to park and walk in there by himself, right? And, and, and along the river is public, right? So, so the high watermark of rivers is, is public. Anybody can go, you can walk up and down the side of a river anywhere in America pretty much, you know? Even though private property may come up to it. But especially Water One did not want act, because most of that is their access down there. And they didn't want it because they don't want people on the wiers for some obvious reasons, right? If they fall off, get hurt, get damaged, also cross over into the water intake, you know, do bad stuff, whatever. So, there's just, you know, there's never been really a system to promote that area for the purposes of people coming and fishing in there. But again, it creates problems with the parking even there on Mars's property because sometimes they park out right of way. They don't really want them parking there. The on-the-go people, uh, they, I think, charge people. If you want to park in their parking lot, you can pay them a fee to park there. Uh, I don't know if they still do that, but.
And I think that's why they, when I saw people, it was getting dark and it's super dark right there. And I think they were walking up to the gas station. So, I thought that.
There's no sidewalks.
Is a little concerning, yeah, for safety.
Yeah. I think the overall view of the thing was, you know, there's no support for the parking there. All the infrastructure that might have to be put in. And once you got off the KDOT property, you're on somebody else's property.
Right.
So, there really wasn't any support for drawing people there. Where there was support to draw people, it's the boat ramp that we already have, where people participate as an improved area and it's safer and you can fish and do all the things that people do. So, that was the encouragement, we already have something. Why do we really want to try to manage something with private property involved? So, it all came full circle back to go to the, that's a boat ramp.
Well, and that might be something we could put a sign up with an arrow, Edwardsville Boat, Boat Ramp.
Yeah, and in the future, you know, we've talked about that area that, that, that we did the tip project in and stuff. And you got a large area there that is, uh, you know, floodway.
Right.
And we talked about if there's an interior road in a parking lot there where you're then not crossing private property and you have some organized access, right? Uh, you know, for, for people that want to, you know, I mean, we want to encourage people to use our resources, our river responsibly and things. But then we also need to be able to access it from the law enforcement or, you know, in, I mean, somebody gets hurt, I mean, just, you know, just fishing and they slip and twist a knee, break an ankle, whatever, just those kind of things happen. We need to be able to access it in that area you're talking about. This really is not, there's not, there's no easy way to access. And I mean, there is, there is some emergency access, but even that, it's got gates and things to get, to get there. That's really been the long discussion about it.
Okay. All right, guys, that's all for tonight. Thank you.